Six o'clock, I'll bring the Tuolumne County Planning Commission meeting to order of April fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start off with our Planning Commission business. First, any report from the staff or the commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Happy Income Tax Day.
Yeah, I was gonna make some crack about that.
Oh, I stole your thunder, dear, I'm sorry. I was just gonna let the Commission know about schedules. We do have four items for your next meeting, which will be on May sixth. We have five Wednesdays this month, so it won't be for three weeks. So it would be May sixth. We do not expect to have a meeting on May twentieth.
Okay.
And that's all I have to report this evening.
Okay, any Commissioner have any report? All right, seeing none, we'll go to a report from the Planning Committee representative.
Have not had a meeting.
Okay, takes care of that report. How about a report from the Ag Advisory Committee?
Mr. Chairman, we haven't had a meeting since our last meeting. We will be having a meeting tomorrow night at seven, so I'll have a report on the next one.
Okay, thank you. Our item four, minutes of the meeting of April first. Anybody have any corrections or additions? Seeing none, I'll declare them approved. Next would be public comment. Anybody welcome to address the Commission on any item not on the agenda? I don't see anybody, so we will close public comment period. We now go to a public hearing having to do with a workshop on a comprehensive update of the Tuolumne County General Plan. Ms. Shane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Adam Paskowski is our Senior Planner, who is coordinating this entire project, which is a comprehensive update of the nineteen ninety-six General Plan. So he's going to give you an overview as what a General Plan is to begin with, and then get into the specifics about the proposed update of Tuolumne County's General Plan.
Okay, before you start, Adam, I'd advise the audience that we will stop from time to time and welcome public comments or questions or what have you. So this is a public hearing, and we certainly welcome the public input on this very major, major document. Of course, these other guys got it on a little disk, but we don't. Okay, Adam, it's all yours.
Thank you. Adam Paskowski, Supervisor and Senior Planner for the Planning Division of the CRA. Once again, the purpose of-
I might speak into the mic a little better, it's a little soft there, at least for some of us.
Once again, the purpose of this workshop is to explain what the General Plan is and what the proposed changes to the General Plan are. First, I'll explain what the purpose and the requirements of the General Plan are, and then I will explain the proposed text changes in the actual Tuolumne County General Plan. So in California, General Plans have been required since nineteen thirty-seven to guide the future growth of the county, and it's recommended to update the General Plan approximately every twenty years. And the last time we updated the Tuolumne County General Plan was in nineteen ninety-six, so we're due for an update now. Although the General Plan is required by the state, it is up to the county to develop the plan and just put our, just develop the plan as we see it fit. The purpose of the General Plan is to analyze conditions and also to define goals and policies, as well as programs, to achieve the actual goals in the plan. The General Plan provides goals for both development and environmental protection, and is utilized, as we're proposing, for the next twenty-five years to make day-to-day decisions regarding the growth of the county and the direction the county should achieve. As I mentioned, the last General Plan was updated in nineteen ninety-six, and in 2013, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to prepare an update to the General Plan, and they designated the Planning Committee to assist in the draft changes to the General As part of this project, we are also updating the Regional Transportation Plan through the Tuolumne County Transportation Council. And so both the Regional Transportation Plan and the General Plan need to be consistent with each other. Therefore, in order to save money, the county has teamed up with the Transportation Council to coordinate the preparation of two separate program EIRs. One evaluating the General Plan and the other taking a look at the Regional Transportation Plan. And we are using the same consultant for both EIRs, and the same information will be required in both documents. For the past several years, we had a countywide project that was referred to as the Blueprint. And through that process, it was decided on how the county will grow for the next twenty to twenty-five years, which was the distinctive community scenario. What that means is to keep the communities distinct and separate by having open areas or agricultural property in between the communities so that they do not merge together. And these are the key issues that will be analyzed in the Environment Impact Report. And this was the original proposed timeline for completing the General Plan update. So state law requires that seven elements must be addressed in the General Plan. And on the following slides, I will explain the proposed changes to each element of the General Plan, and I'll skip the land use and circulation for now, but I'll come back to them at the end of my presentation, since those are the key elements that will be looked at. The housing element is the only section of the General Plan that is required to be updated more often than twenty years, and the county had the housing element certified with the state in this past August last year. And therefore, we're not proposing to make any changes of this element during this time. The conservation element is required to address natural resources such as water, forest soil, wildlife, and minerals. And the open space element is required to identify the preservation or management of those natural resources. So due to their similarities that are in both the required conservation and open space elements, we combine them to one element for our nineteen ninety-six General Plan, and through this General Plan update, we're proposing to rename the element to the Natural Resources Element. As for the actual proposed changes in the text, the Water Resources Section is proposed to be deleted and will be inserted into the new proposed water element, and other changes in this element are minor except for the Biological Resources Section. The Board of Supervisors established the Biological Resources Ad-Hoc Committee to draft a new Biological Resources Section. Through that process, it was proposed that the nineteen eighty-seven Tuolumne County Wildlife Handbook, which was used to develop mitigation measures for development projects, be removed and clarified that the General Plan shall be in compliance with state and federal law. In addition, this revised Biological Resources Section proposed standards for removal of oak woodlands. Currently, the county utilizes a threshold developed with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife that if ten percent or more of the oaks on a product site are affected, then a oak woodland mitigation program is required. The new proposal will basically exempt urban areas and parcels that are less than two acres in size. The recommendations have been included in the proposed General Plan update and will also be evaluated in the EIR. The noise element is required to quantify noise levels and identify any noise issues in the county, and this element has not been updated since nineteen ninety-six. However, even though only minor text changes are being proposed at this time, the EIR will analyze noise. The safety element is required to analyze geologic hazards, flooding and fire hazards, and the safety element was last updated last year, June of 2014, and was reviewed by the State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. Therefore, the proposed changes that we are proposing at this time for the General Plan update for this element are very minor, which include sentence restructuring, name changes, and updated statistics. The state law also allows the county to adopt optional elements to be included in the General Plan that the county feels are important to the community. The current General Plans include seven optional elements and five community plans, and this is in addition to the seven required elements. The proposed General Plan update includes two additional optional elements, a Water Resources Element and a Healthy Communities Element. So the first optional element that we added in the nineteen ninety-six General, or had in the nineteen ninety-six General Plan is the Public Facilities and Services Element, and this was to address the public facilities and services necessary to support the current and future residents and visitors of the county. The focus is on those services provided by the county of Tuolumne and other local agencies, and how the needs for those services relate to future growth. Proposed changes to this element include encouraging school districts to adopt safe routes to schools, provide traffic safety education, equip school buses with bicycle racks, and expand electronic services, I'm sorry, explaining electronic services offered at libraries. In addition, the Public Water Supplies and Sewer Systems Sections are proposed to be removed from this element and are proposed to be placed in a new Water Resources Element. The Recreation Element addresses the recreational needs of Tuolumne County's residents and visitors. That plan was incorporated into the General Plan as an optional element, and it addressed the need for and the location of new parks and recreational facilities. An important aspect of this element was the identification of sources of funding for acquisition, development, and maintenance of new parks and recreational facilities. There are mostly minor changes proposed for this element. However, the several new programs that we are proposing is to, one, preserve open areas for recreation, provide recreation in proximity to neighborhoods, encourage bicycle use throughout the county, and encourage recreational facilities such as bicycle racks for new commercial and industrial development. The Cultural Resources Management Element addresses the importance of the county's history and establishes thresholds for requiring cultural resource studies for new projects. This element was last updated in 2009, and therefore, we are only proposing minor changes at this time. And those are primarily consistent of, consistent of edu, I'm sorry, consistent editing policies and programs that have already been completed. The Economic Development Element was created to promote a positive image of the county and a positive attitude and support towards economic development among other local organizations and agencies outside of the county. This was last updated in 2011, and therefore, there are only several minor changes proposed to update to encourage economic growth within the community boundaries and to improve the telecommunications infrastructure throughout the county. Major changes to the Agricultural Resources Element include revisions to the evaluation of the conversion of agricultural land, the agricultural rating system, and a new section that promotes agritourism. These proposed changes have been in discussion with the State Department of Conservation. As part of the EIR, revisions to Resolution 10406, which implements the California Land Conservation Act, which is the Uwenson Act, as well as revisions to the Ordinance Code to promote agritourism, will be reviewed concurrently with the General Plan update. So it's all part of the contract in the EIR. The purpose of the Air Quality Element is to improve air quality in the county. This element has not been updated since nineteen ninety-six, and in order to reduce air pollution emissions and greenhouse gas emissions, consistent with Assembly Bill 32, which calls for statewide reduction in greenhouse gas emissions to nineteen ninety levels by 2020, it's proposed to incorporate the policies identified in the already completed countywide greenhouse gas study into the Air Quality Element. The Community Identity Element provides the framework for preserving the uniqueness and character of each community within the county. It is designed to establish a blueprint for creating more livable environments while preserving and enhancing the character and identity of each community. It is proposed to add a few policies to this element to continue to preserve the county's rural heritage and scenic quality by promoting growth within and adjacent to existing communities, and to encourage and support programs and facilities that provide services to senior citizens in the county. So you can see that there's a common theme throughout here that regarding the distinctive communities, keeping the development within the existing communities and not expanding Due to recent interests in the water rights and water supplies and the reactivation of the Tuolumne County Water Agency, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to prepare a water element as an optional element to the General Plan that includes goals, policies, and programs to protect, enhance, and expand water resources throughout the county. As I previously mentioned, the Water Resources Section from the Conservation and Open Space Element, and the Public Water Supply Section and Sewer Systems Sections from the Public Facilities and Services Element are proposed to be moved into this new Water Resources Element. In addition, the proposed Water Resources Element includes a Water Supply Section and a Water Conservation Section. This element has been reviewed extensively with TUD, and we have incorporated their comments into this element. And also to note, the Board of Supervisors has directed us to revisit the water element and to bring this back to the Water Committee for further evaluation. The Board also directed staff to establish a new Healthy Communities Element to the General Plan, which was advocated by the Tuolumne County Health Department and by Dr. Stolt. And this was to conduct three things. The first is to protect residents from secondhand smoke exposure in multi-unit housing. The second is to promote access to healthy foods and nutrition. And the last was to promote physical activity, such as promoting safe routes to schools, walkable communities, and recreational trails. As I mentioned before, the General Plan also has five community plans, whose purpose is to address the unique characteristics of those communities. And these are those five community plans. We're not making any substantial changes to these plans, and a few of them were updated recently. Columbia was updated in 2009, Jamestown was updated in 2011, and the Tuolumne Community Plan was updated in 2007. And we're not proposing any changes at all to the Mountain Springs Community Plan, because that was a, an application by a developer, so the county's not getting involved with that one. So on to the Land Use Element. The Land Use Element functions as a guide to the ultimate pattern of development for the county at buildout. And to provide a little background onto the nineteen ninety-six General Plan, that plan was evaluated on a population projection by the State Department of Finance of approximately ninety-seven thousand residents in our county by the year 2020. So through this update, we reduced that population projection to about sixty-three thousand residents by the year 2040. And for reference, our current population is just above fifty-four thousand.
Could you redo those numbers one more time for me?
Sure. In nineteen ninety-six, the population projection was ninety-seven thousand, and for this General Plan update, we have reduced that to, and that was for the year 2020. For this General Plan update, by the year 2040, the population projection was about sixty-three thousand. And the current population is about, is just over fifty-four thousand.
Thank you.
The proposed changes to this element primarily includes changes to the text to implement the distinctive community's growth scenario, such as concentrating development within and adjacent to the existing communities. In addition, the Land Use Element is required to include land use diagrams of the county. Within several communities throughout the county, such as Columbia, Jamestown, Big Oak Flat, and surrounding Sonora, more intense General Plan designations are proposed to be consistent with the distinctive community's growth scenario. And that's basically your higher residential densities and then more commercial or mixed use. For other areas of the county, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to amend the General Plan designation throughout the county to match the existing zoning district. And the direction there was that no properties will be downzoned. Throughout this process, there was about forty-three hundred parcels, which is about ten percent of the county, that are proposed to have their General Plan designation changed, in which we mailed out letters to all those property owners. In response to those letters, the county received over two-hundred-and-fifty phone calls now, and I'll say probably over, close to a hundred emails, and about twenty or so letters from the public regarding these changes. A few of the letters that we received were in opposition to the proposed changes, as well as for their property, as well as their surrounding areas. And I'll discuss the majority of these changes that were throughout the county on the following slides. So let me just, give me a second to transfer this over. So here in Jamestown, you have 108 coming through here. Right here is Main Street. We have Rawhide Road coming through here. And, let's see. So you have your downtown Jamestown's right here, so I think that pretty much sums up that map. Through the Blueprint Project, the high-density residential, I'll zoom in a little bit, so it'll be a little bit more clear. So through the Blueprint Project, it identified adding high-density residential on either side of Jamestown, and then going down to some medium-density residential.
Is the darker color being higher density?
I'm sorry.
The higher color is higher density? The darker-
The darker color is the higher density, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So that was proposed through the Blueprint and as part of the project. The mixed use that you see down here in the core of Jamestown, that was proposed by the Board of Supervisors' Planning Committee, and the existing General Plan for those parcels are currently general commercial, and they are currently zoned for commercial. And the major reason is that the Planning Committee wants to see more mixed use throughout the county, so you'll see a lot of areas throughout certain communities that propose more mixed use instead of the commercial. And through the outreach that we've conducted, we did receive some responses regarding this mixed use throughout the county, and the main reason was that hotels are not a permitted use in the mixed-use zoning district, but it is a permitted use in the existing general commercial zoning district. And through the Board of Supervisors, it was pretty much directed that, and once this gets adopted, that we would amend the general commer, or, I'm sorry, the mixed-use zoning district to possibly allow hotels and motels, as well as the possibility of looking into other uses that we can allow.
Should I go through?
So, mix-
Why don't we just stop here and see if there are any questions? Commissioner Ray?
Yeah, I just wanted, I mean, I know I probably should know this, but I don't. What would mixed use allow that general commercial doesn't? I mean, you cited hotels that are the other way around, but-
Right.
There's a desire to go to mixed use, there must be a reason, and I'm just trying to understand what that reason is.
So general commercial, the main difference is the hotels and motels, and general commercial also allows one dwelling unit per parcel, whereas mixed use allows two dwellings or one duplex as a permitted use, and then you can get a conditional use for up to fifteen dwelling units per acre.
That's the primary difference.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody in the public wish to comment or question on what's been presented so far? If not, you can continue on, Adam.
You know, it's okay.
Wait a minute, you wish to address the Commission, please come up.
Yeah, I'm more of a-
No, no, wait till you get there, so we can hear you, please. Thank you.
I'm more of a visual learner than an audio learner, and it's hard for me to really grasp a lot of what he's saying. Is the exchange is available in a written format that we can look at? The public can look at it written?
Yeah, you want to respond to that, Adam, of course you are.
Yes, we have some discs up here that we can provide to the public, so you'll be able to view these on, on your desktop, on your computer. We also have a website. Our website is www.tuolumnecounty.ca.gov, and then it's slash General Plan Update, and that'll take you directly to our website for the General Plan Update. And on there, we have posted all the text changes, so the big binders, that's about between eight hundred and a thousand pages, that's all posted on the website, and it's broken down by chapter or element.
Well, I'm sure this lady wants to see some maps, she could come into your office-
Yes.
And I'm sure you've got piles of maps there that you could display to her.
Yes.
Is that true?
Yes, you can-
Thank you.
The public can come to our office, and we can explain the maps.
Yes, ma'am, you'd like to come? Oh, I'm sorry, we can't, can't hear you unless you come up.
I just want to ask-
No, that's-
Have memory-
That's what we have a loudspeaker for. Okay, thank you.
He said the link to the computer, or computer link or whatever, said it so quick, I couldn't even write it down.
Okay.
So I just wanted to repeat that, that's all.
Sure.
Repeat it slowly, please.
Sure.
I'm all, I mean-
You're doing fine.
I need a little support.
The website is, it's our regular website, that starts off, it's www.tuolumnecounty.ca.gov slash General Plan Update, and that's all one word, no spaces.
Okay, you get that okay?
Well, are they all spelled out? The whole, or is it T-U-O-C-A, whatever? Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's go on. Go ahead, Adam.
So the other changes that you see out here on the outlined areas, those are all changes that were directed by the Board of Supervisors, and that was that direction where they didn't want to see properties downzoned. So where the zoning and the General Plan were inconsistent, we were changing the General Plan so that the zoning districts that are there will be able to remain. And if anybody has any questions regarding the existing General Plan versus the proposed, I can always just show you what the existing is, and then I can always put the overlay of the proposed General Plan on top, so you can see what the overall outcome is. So I'll move over to Stent. So over here in Stent, there's Jacksonville Road and Algerine Road, Jacksonville and Stent cut off. So all the proposed changes in this area is based on the Board's direction that we, that the General Plan be amended so that no one is downzoned, and that's pretty much the proposed changes in this area. And I'll just, if there's no questions, I'll jump to Columbia.
Well, if there's no change, there's no change in this map, is that what you're saying?
The proposed change is because of the, the General Plan is inconsistent with the zoning district. So there's, if you see, the big, major changes are in this area. So currently, that's estate residential, which is two-acre lots, but all those lots are well less than an acre. And so, and their zoning is R1, which is the single-family residential. So it's changed into yellow, which is our low-density residential, so that those properties will be able to keep their existing zoning district.
I was just gonna comment. By and large, the direction of the Board to not downgrade existing zoning and by change in the General Plan really has a very minimal effect on any potential growth. Like Stent, for example, to develop those R1 properties further, you need public water. There is no public water in that area. So I just want to assure people, even though we have quite a few changes shown on these maps, the actual potential for more growth is limited, except within the community boundaries themselves.
So this is essentially a cleanup ex-
Yeah.
You got a question, Mr. Ray?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Essentially a cleanup, then.
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead, Adam.
Okay. Moving over to Columbia, you have Highway forty-nine here, you have Parrot's Ferry Road coming up, you have the Columbia State Historic Park, this is the airport property, so, and you have Sawmill Flat Road over here. And one thing I want to note, I forgot to mention while I was on Jamestown, is that a couple of these maps have changed a little bit based on a direction from the Board of Supervisors from our February meeting and a couple of letters that we received afterwards. So those properties are not reflected in here yet, because this is a, just downloaded right onto our laptop, and everything that's on our website is correct in the proposed changes. But the changes that, between the two, is very limited. So in Columbia, the Blueprint Project recommended adding the General Plan for a majority of the parcels along Parrot's Ferry Road to mixed use. So that's this area, and I can zoom in. So, and those properties are currently zoned, or currently have a General Plan and zoning district of commercial, high-density or medium-density, as well as low-density- high-density or medium-density, as well as low-density residential, so your your residential districts, as well as general commercial. So the proposal there is to change all those to mixed use. And then, in this area, the blueprint also proposed the large-lot residential on this area and the rural residential over here. And these proposed changes are all consistent with the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. And then the proposed changes along Sawmill Flat Road is just changing that general plan designation from estate residential to single-family residential. And all these changes are upgrades, so it's not based on the their zoning district, so they'll be upzoned. And then the one last property to note is the airport property. Currently, that, the airport property is, has a general plan designation of business park, and we're proposing to change it to public. With it being public, we still have the same, as it's county-owned, still have the same rights to develop it as we see fit. So, once again, the single-family residential, that's your, basically your parcel size between a quarter acre to an acre. Your, the rural residential, those are your properties that are about five acres in size. And the large-lot residential is your ten-acre parcels. And when I talk about the estate residential, all these properties over here are currently estate residential, and that's typically your two-acre parcels. And most of these properties over here, they're already one acre in size, or maybe less. So, going over to the surrounding Sonora area. You have 49 Washington Street coming through downtown Sonora. 108 coming through here. Cabazoo. And then, over here is the Pedro Y. And then down here, I'll get into more detail on the next area that I go to, that's the Law and Justice Center. So surrounding the Sonora area, the blueprint project recommended several changes. Along a small portion of Snell Street up here, it recommended high-density and also medium-density residential. So you're a small area right here. And then it also recommended this area going up to Bald Mountain Road up to here. Sort of recommended the high-density residential, and then extend to estate residential, and then go into low-density residential. So and then through the Board of Supervisors, they recommended, or they requested that we extend the low-density residential going all the way to 49, and also add in some mixed use or commercial along, over here along the highway. And then the other changes on the outlined areas up here, up here is all, as well as over here, are changes based on the existing zoning.
Got a question here?
Yeah. This is not specifically this map, but just in general, is there a time in your presentation where you're going to summarize the public comment feedback that you've gotten around these changes so far? Or should we be addressing those as we go through these maps?
We addressed these at the Board of Supervisors meeting with the comments that we received. We did receive, in this area, a couple of comments. One was from this property owner, they didn't want the high-density residential, they want to keep the mixed use that's there. And then there is this property here where they want to, that's currently agricultural, and they want to stay agricultural.
As we go through these things, I'd find it helpful if we found out what people's needs were as we, as we looked at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So here's the, zoomed in over towards the Law and Justice Center site. The Law and Justice Center is, property is located over here, you have the highway right above it. You have Limecomb coming through here, and let's see, I guess, an Old Ward's Ferry Road. You have Stockton Gona. So the major proposed changes here are adjacent to the Law and Justice Center. Through the blueprint project, it was recommended to place business park mixed use, and business park is basically your office-type development. Mixed use of some medium-density residential, and also low-density residential, as well as some commercial and estate residential, which are two-acre lots. And we were, we've been in communication with the property owner and this, they're agreeable to this proposal. And they actually proposed the recreation and park in this area, the property owner did. And then the other changes that you see over here for the heavy industrial and light industrial, those are consistent with the board's direction, so that the parcels are not downzoned. Those properties are currently zoned M1 and M2, but have a general plan designation of rural residential, which is your five acres residential lot instead of industrial. So I'll move over to Twainheart.
Let's see, before we do that, any questions so far, before we get too far afield? Yes, ma'am? No?
I wonder if we, if you have a layer of the water distribution system infrastructure that you can put over, you know, maybe a little different color. Do you have that layer in there that we might be able to see what's serviced, what isn't, what's ground, you know, what's going to be well-developed?
We we do have water lines information. I don't have it on this computer. But we do have that in our office, and based on the type of development, like we mentioned earlier with the low-density residential, the requirement is public water and sewer. So if they don't have it already, then they would have to extend water lines. So it's, like we mentioned in the Stent area, it's unlikely that would happen. But those lots are already existing, and they're less than an acre in size. So it's really no changes there. It's basically on new development on the requirements.
Oh. Well, I guess I'm wondering if when you say proposed, does that mean that there isn't water infrastructure delivery in that area, so that would include that? Or is that, is that maybe a misunderstanding?
I can respond to that. In many cases, the infrastructure is already there. When we looked at Jamestown, Columbia, they have water and sewer. Some of these areas adjacent to the city of Sonora, water and sewer are not perhaps to the actual parcels, but are within reasonable distance to be extended. Please keep in mind that this is a twenty planning horizon. So we're looking for the future to be able to accommodate and to encourage additional industrial development, for example. That may not have all the development requirements yet. But part of our job is to identify areas where it's a logical extension of services and not a leapfrog-type extension of services.
Thank you. See, anything else? Okay, Adam, go ahead.
Okay, so this is really zoomed out, but this is the Twainheart area. And I'll zoom in in a little bit. But you have your, the highway 108. Downtown Twainheart's over here, the golf course. And you have South Fork going up here. So mostly these changes, and why so zoomed out, is mostly directed by the board, so that there's no downzones. But I'll zoom into downtown Twainheart. So so through the Board of Supervisors Plan Committee, it was recommended to add some additional mixed use in Twainheart. And this was along Fuller Road, Metal Drive, and also Twainheart Drive, so these areas is the proposed mixed use. And then, just changing that to a general commercial to reflect the commercial use of that property. So that's pretty much it for Twainheart, pretty limited. I'll go over to Tualamie. So here's Tualamie, Tualamie Road and Tualamie Road North, right here. You have Carter Street here, Main Street. The library is over here, and here's the park and the Memorial Hall. So, in Tualamie, all the general commercial, medium and high-density residential proposals are due to the board's direction, that none of the parcels are downzoned. And all these parcels currently have a low-density residential or neighborhood commercial. And then neighborhood commercials, pretty much, your commercial-type use is, it's not as intense as general commercial, but since it's downtown Tualamie, it makes sense to have commercial, and these properties are zoned general commercial, so it's just matching those, the zoning with the general plan. But during the Board of Supervisors Plan Committee review, that committee recommended amending several blocks of Tualamie along Chestnut and Carter. So these blocks here to be changed to mixed use. And those parcels currently have a general plan designation of neighborhood commercial. And their zoning is mostly C1, which is your general commercial. So I'll move over to Big Oak Flat, unless there's a question. So here in Big Oak Flat, Highway 120 going right through center. The SCAR project site is over here. So through the blueprint project, it was recommended that high and medium-density residential be placed along the highway. And when with this was reviewed by the Plan Committee, they recommended to change some of the medium and high-density residential to mixed use. And then the other changes that you see are reflected based on the direction of the board, so not downzone any properties. And I can zoom in a little bit to make it a little bit more clear, so the words aren't. So you got your, the high medi, high-density residential here and here, proposed medium-density. And then the Board of Supervisors Plan Committee proposed the mixed use on either end. And then proposing general commercial and heavy commercial on this end of Big Oak Flat. So the last spot is Groveland. So you have Main Street, the highway going through here, for ready, towards Pine Mountain Lake and Deer Flat Road over here. So through the Board of Supervisors Plan Committee review, they recommended adding additional mixed use. That's what this area is here. Front of Main Street in Groveland, adjacent to a few other parcels that already are designated mixed use. And all those parcels are currently zoned and have a general commercial, general plan designation. And then all the other parcels that you see outlined here is just reflective of the board's direction to not downzone those properties. So I'll, if there's no questions about the maps, I'll head back to the text.
Any questions so far? Okay. No?
I wonder for future...
Ma'am, address the board, would you please?
Okay. I'm wondering that for future planning, that if we might have a map that shows where the extension of water distribution systems would be, and where the development of groundwater would be for kind of these same areas, but primarily Sonora, Tualamie, Twainheart, that area. I don't...
I'm sure that there are maps available that show every pipeline in the county. Am I, I think I'm right in saying that.
Yes, that's correct.
As far as the distribution of wells, a lot of those are private wells, I doubt if they've
Yeah, that's real.
ever been mapped, or even will be.
That's correct.
So does that answer, I mean, you want to see where the water lines are today, and as Ms. Shane mentioned, this plan goes out twenty, thirty years. So there could be a lot of changes in twenty or thirty years, but right now, there are maps showing where the pipelines are.
Well, I wasn't actually looking for a map on where the existing lines were. I was thinking of a map that had, such as these, that had where there's going to be proposed development, and proposed business and residential. And which of those would be, like, just really a color code. These areas would have water lines, but these areas would be groundwater use. So that when you looked at the map and you saw the proposed residential, or the proposed mixed use, or whatever, that you would also, maybe you could even have like a certain diagonal line for if it was going to be water lines.
I could interrupt. These maps will tell you where it's possible to have development, either industrial or single-family home. That's the purpose of the colors on these maps.
Right.
Okay. So does that, I don't know if that satisfies you?
Well, in that development, you will have either a water line infrastructure that will support that, or you will have a groundwater use to support that.
I think maybe there may be some confusion as to how this process moves forward a little bit, and you can jump in here anytime, Beth. But as you look at a zoning, and we say, well, we're going to make this area an industrial area. And we're going to have heavy industrial in that. That does not necessarily mean that, at this point, we know how that would happen.
Okay.
So, yeah, so you're looking and say, well, we're going to have pipes. At this point, until the developer comes in and proposes it, there's no real knowledge. Just, what you're asking for, I don't think anybody knows yet. Whether, if that came in, it could be so much different if that was a semiconductor factory, or somebody that was making, you know, mailing out reading cards. It's, you can't make that upfront as to what you need. The process of getting those, that development done is inclusive of figuring out how one would get the water in there. All this says is that we wouldn't turn away that process, that process from the start. It allows the person to get started down the path of figuring it out. They'd have to figure out how they're going to get water there before they'd ever be able to go forward. Could you do a better job of that?
No, no, I was going to say, that's a very explanation. And I also wanted to reiterate what Chairman Plann said. The actual colors on the map depict the land use designations. While we may not show pipelines, what we do know is that policies in the general plan require certain types of development to be served by those publics, and, you know, water and sewer. And so, for example, the yellow that you see would have to have that in order to develop further. And by development, we don't mean just building a single-family home, because everyone's entitled to do that on their property. It would mean land divisions, or getting a use permit for some use, other than what's permitted by the zoning ordinance. So by looking at the maps, and when you know the colors, and then we can explain to you which ones are required by the general plan to have water and sewer, and which ones are not. Gives you a good idea, just by looking at the land use designations, where those infrastructure needs are going to have to be installed. So I think you can get a pretty good clue just by looking at the actual land use designations. But we also do have maps of the existing pipelines, but as Commissioner Baker said, we wouldn't know exactly when it's going to be extended, or even the size of pipes or anything, at this point. It'll depend on when they develop and the extent of the development, how big's the project going to be. And even though a project, for example, industrial, may not be required to have public water, they likely will because of the fire requirements. So they're going to typically need to put in some kind of a fire protection system, usually hydrants. Otherwise, you have to build expensive onsite tanks. And so, again, what we can explain to you is what is required to have that public services before they could develop.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Yes, Peter?
Want to, to her concern about groundwater versus, you know, wells, I don't think, without knowing an awful lot about the individual property, you know whether or not you'd even be able to perfect a well. Working for a number of clients in the valley, and that's by... I'm working for a number of clients in the valley, and that's by no means guaranteed anywhere. It's a little even less likely to know here because of the fractured rock. So that's pretty tough to know, until you actually get onto the site and start drilling holes and find out whether you have it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If you see any, please proceed. Are we shifting out of the land use element now?
Yes, we're shifting out of land use and heading into circulation. So this is basically my last slide. So this is going back to the text document, to the full eight to 1,000 pages. The state law has required the inclusion of a circulation element in the general plan since 1955. And this element is not just a transportation plan, but is actually intended to be an infrastructure plan, so that it also addresses the circulation of people, goods, energy, water, sewage, storm drainage, and as well as communications. And this also serves, the circulation element also serves as the link between the general plan and the regional transportation plan that the Tuolumne County Transportation Council is working on. In 2008 Assembly Bill 1358, as the California Complete Streets Act was signed, the Act states in, "Or to fulfill the commitment to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, make the most efficient use of urban land and transportation infrastructure, and improve public health by encouraging physical activity, transportation planners must find innovative ways to reduce vehicle miles traveled, and to shift from short trips in the automobile to biking, walking, and use of public transit." And that's a quote directly from the Act. So we updated the circulation element in 2012, but it was not a substantial revision of the element. So at that time, we were not required to implement that Act. But now, since we are doing a general plan update, we are required to do that, and we have included policies and programs in the general plan and the circulation element to meet that Act. And we also made other changes throughout this element, to be consistent with, once again, the distinctive communities element, to focus future development within the existing So that's, that was my last slide, and for anyone in the audience here, is my contact information. If you have any additional questions in the future regarding the general plan update, or would like more information, you can write down my email, or my number or address, and I'll be happy to talk to you.
Okay, is that complete your presentation for this evening?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Shane?
Yes, we're available to answer questions you may have, or, again, after your meeting, we'll be here, too, for any member of the audience who has any specific questions that they'd like to ask us at staff level.
I take it we're going to do this in small bites?
This was an overview, as a purpose of tonight's meeting.
Well, two elements, yeah.
Yeah. And so, as we proceed through the EIR process, it'll be up to the commission, if you want to have more in-depth review, page by page, anything like that, we can do whatever you want, as far as becoming familiar with the document.
Well, I doubt we're going to want anything page by page, because some of us might be around to get to that last page. But anyway, we'll have our regular hearings on this.
You will have, after the EIR has been completed.
And then we will deal, and have a structure of how we're going to discuss this, probably not page by page, but section by section, or something like that.
Yes, probably element by element, yes, would be my guess.
Is what we'll do. So, okay, here we are. Questions of the commissioners to start with, comments?
I guess I have a question or a comment. Are other counties around us happening to be going through this at the same time? Or are we, is it sort of asynchronous? Is there somebody else that has done this recently we can benchmark against, and look at how they did it, and see if there's anything we can learn from them?
Yes, and there are several other counties that are going through the general plan update, either recently or currently. And we have used, when developing our general plan, we have looked at those as part of our research on the general plan update.
I mean, a lot of what we're doing is responding to mandates that are coming down from Sacramento, right?
Right.
So probably some common solutions that we can apply.
Right, and those have all been applied. And the major difference with ours compared to other ones is that distinctive community scenario, where we want to keep future development within our existing communities, and not really expand outward.
Amador and Calaveras Counties are both currently working on general plan updates. Calaveras County, I believe, is in its seventh year of working on theirs. They just released it.
Let's not use that one as a benchmark.
Yeah. And Amador is a similar situation. This is a success story. I'd like to brag a little bit about Tuolumne County. Calaveras, and Amador, and actually Alpine Counties joined together and got a blueprint grant before Tuolumne County did. And they were working as a three-county effort in that regard. They issued, questions came up from people, why isn't Tuolumne County doing a blueprint? So Darren Grossi, who is our executive director of the Transportation Council, talked to Cal Transportation, and was able to apply for a blueprint grant after this other project had started. Well, we finished, it took us longer than we anticipated, but we did complete our blueprint. The Board of Supervisors adopted the blueprint, and we are implementing the blueprint through the general plan update. The blueprint for Calaveras and Amador County has never been completed. And so I believe we have a huge advantage, because we went through that first step of our planning process, for both the regional plan update and our general plan update, that we already developed and got approval from the board of the scenario that we'd like to see for future growth. And that was a very public process. And so, again, what we're doing now is incorporating that into this plan. So when you do go through, either on the computer or the big thousand-page book, you don't see a lot of red and blue. I mean, we've kept a lot of our general plan elements up to date over the years, since 1996. So it's not as if we're starting from scratch. And I think that's another positive, that some of the other counties have not done. And so, again, it's comprehensive in that we're doing the whole general plan at one time, going back through it. But many of these elements have very few changes. And so, again, I think the focus of the changes really is what we're doing with the land use element and the circulation. The natural resources element, of course, is a big issue, too, because of the biological resources. And right now, frankly, because of the drought, the water element is probably the most critical element of all. How are we going to provide for growth, and accommodate future growth, and encourage growth, if that's what the Board of Supervisors wants to do, unless we've identified water source for those new people?
Yeah, go ahead.
Two more questions, and they get, they get less and less important as they go forward. And the next one, AB 32, we've been talking, when did AB 32 come around? It's been around for a lot of years now, right? Ten, or eight, or six?
It was at least ten.
2000?
2000. It was, Governor Schwarzenegger was in office at the time. I want to say 2004, so it'd be at least 10 years ago.
So it's been around for a while, and we've had this goal that sits out there for 2020, which is getting pretty close now. Do we, and to me, it's always been quite vague as to how one gets there. You know, it's, there's this goal that was set out there, but all the steps in between were sort of left up to you guys to figure it out on your own. Is, do we know where we are? You know, 20%, there ought to be, we ought to be able to plot how far we've come so far, to know whether or not we've got 18 to go, or two to go at this point.
Is this greenhouse?
Yeah, it is.
Yes, greenhouse gas.
By 20% by 2020.
Yeah.
And we completed a countywide greenhouse gas study a few years ago. So it took a look at all that, and as part of the air quality element, or in the general plan, we're incorporating those policies from that document, so we'll meet the requirements.
I guess the good news is, we don't have to show that we are meeting it. We have to contribute to the state's meeting it. And as a rural area, our greenhouse gas generation is, you know, almost inconsequential compared to what's happening in the metropolitan areas. The good news is that technology is what's really improving the air quality and reducing greenhouse gas footprint, because most of that greenhouse gas emissions came, comes from automobiles, so it's transportation. But with hybrid vehicles, and electric cars, and just improvements in regular vehicles, much of that has already been reduced significantly.
But we don't have a thermometer.
But I can tell you how much percentage we are, to tell you the truth statewide, though. The Air Resources Board is tracking that.
Well, as long as the wind blows from west-east, we're never going to get a gold medal for air pollution, unless they do something down below, and I don't know how they do it.
And the last point is really a little bit down in the weeds, and it's more in a direction, and that is, is that on a, we talked a little bit about noise standards in here, and having to redo that. And that seems like it comes up every single time, and wherever we're dealing with anything. And the answers we give are never ones that satisfy the people that are complaining about it. And I have no ideas as to what one would do to make that better. But if there is any way to make the noise thing cleaner and crispier for the people that are trying to understand whether or not they're being affected by, you know, meeting the noise standards, that would be helpful for us. And I have no idea how one would do that.
I don't think the general plan's the place for that. I mean, the general plan has a policy that is still in the proposed update, is for the board to consider adopting a noise ordinance, because that's where you get into the level of specificity that those people, who you heard comments from, would like to see. So, you know, the general plan noise standards apply for new development. Often complaints we receive have nothing to do with development. It's something happening next door, things that people are doing. And so, to be very specific, an ordinance would be the way to go. Other than that, the general plan does provide for standards to be met at the property line for new development. And if, you know, you've got ideas of going beyond that, you're right, it doesn't appease everyone. And it's not instantaneous. So if there's somewhat loud noise crash, we'd probably still meet it at the property line, because it's an average.
Right.
And that is typically how noise standards are set in general plan level documents.
Okay.
Anything else? Yeah, Peter?
For Commissioner Baker, the second largest source was methane from landfills. And since the landfill is now closed, both of them were probably better off for that. When I was working in Mariposa County, theirs is not, and that is an issue. Makes it difficult for them. I had a question for, I don't know if it's Bev or Adam. In reading item 12, you know, in the agenda item, it talks about the circulation element. It talks about, this element is intended to be an infrastructure plan, to address the circulation of people, goods, and then it says, "Energy, water, sewage, storm drainage, and communications." When I look at the circulation element, I see an awful lot of information about roads, and virtually nothing about the rest of those. Now, certainly water would be in water.
Right.
And so, I just didn't know if that, it was confusing to see that, because I didn't expect to see that. And then when I saw it, and looked, and didn't see it, I was like, why is that there? So...
Well, you're right, because this is according from the state law.
Oh, that's what it says in the law.
But the state law also says that it's up to the local jurisdiction to decide how they want to organize their general plan. So those issues have to be addressed, but you're right, they don't necessarily have to be included in the circulation element itself, as long as we address them somewhere else.
So one of the other elements would have it.
Which is how we have done that.
Okay, that answers the question. It just was confusing when I saw it. I looked at infrastructure first, I don't know why.
Yeah.
Okay, now, this is a public hearing, so how about some input from the public? Yes, ma'am?
A little drill.
It's a chance you've been waiting for.
Yes. I would just like to suggest that when the water element is completed by the staff, that we devote a public hearing to that water element, because of the critical nature of that element, and that it not get lumped into all of the other reviews, because if we don't have water, we're not going to be able to do anything. And so, I would like to see that as a separate public hearing, if possible.
Certainly. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yes, I thought I'd just wait in line to save your time.
Fine.
So the, what's the relationship between, I'm new in the community, so what's the relationship between this planning board on water and TUD? Do you work together, or does TUD, because it's a separate board, make up its own guidelines? Or, you know, how does it solve the whole water problem for the county?
Ms. Shane, I can do it. You go ahead. You get paid to do it, and I don't.
We work closely with all of the water districts in the county, not just TUD, of course, that is the largest water district, but also Groveland Community Services District, Lake Don, Peter Community Services District, Twainhart, et cetera. The relationship we have is that the planning commission and the board of supervisors has land use authority under state law.
Has what?
Land use authority. Meaning, they decide where, whether or not to approve a new subdivision, or a new shopping center. That rests solely with the planning commission and the board of supervisors.
Okay.
We are required, however, by the California Water Code, as well as the California Environmental Quality Act, to ensure that when we are reviewing proposed land uses or new development, that we address infrastructure needs to serve that project.
Okay.
So specifically, you're asking water. So if the project's going to be proposed in Jamestown, which is under TUD's, in their area, they provide water to that community, then we would work with them to find out, do you have enough water to serve them? Do they need to extend a water line? Where is that extension going to be? How much water are they going to need? Are they going to impact other users of the water system? And that needs to be addressed as part of our environmental review, before we can approve new development.
Yeah, I'm with you on the EIR, but who does the plan? Does the county do the plan, and then the TUD sees it as okay? Or does TUD put up a plan for how it's going to build out its water sources, and then the county checks to see that it is okay with the state plan?
We both have plans.
I know you do.
Okay. So, for example, the general plan is just that. This is the constitution for growth and development for the county.
Right.
Everything has to be consistent with the general plan. That's why this is such an important document.
Right.
But it's not a detailed document. It's not a blueprint, per se, that shows where the water lines are going to go.
Right.
TUD, for example, is required to have an urban water plan, and to have other types of infrastructure plans.
Right.
And so, we coordinate, I guess the best I can do is say that we coordinate with them on a regular basis, on every project that's proposed. They have reviewed our general plan, they have provided input on the water element. So we are working very closely with them and the other water districts on this proposal, and on any individual proposed development project.
Okay, so what I'm listening to, and see if this is correct, is that TUD has its plan, and you're the planning board, and you have the plan, and because you've worked together for many years, you get together.
They're coordinated, yes.
Yeah, you coordinate, and see that they at least match up, and resolve any differences, that kind of?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Good question.
My name's John Moyle. I just couldn't keep quiet tonight.
Just like old times, John, I remember you over the years. How about it?
My forefathers come here in the, way back in the 1800s, and I'm damn mad at them. They gave away most of our water. They flat gave it away. But there might be a little bit left. And if you're not willing to persist and keep after it, this county's done. I hope our grandchildren and great-grandchildren can stay here and can find work. This is where people should be living, in this county, where the water originated, not down there destroying the valley, where we're growing food. So I hope you're persistent. It sounds like our supervisors are, it sounds like it, that they're going to fight for it. But you don't give up. It's not going to just happen overnight. You've got to keep at it, and keep at it. Let's try to get some water for this county.
Okay, thanks, Eric.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to concur with what was just said. That valley down there, it's always been a concern of mine for many, many years, is that valley down there can feed the whole nation, and you can't eat two-by-fours and asphalt and concrete. These foothills and mountain areas are a great place to live. And so I concur wholeheartedly.
Okay, thank you. Next, yes, sir?
Good evening, John Buckley, Central Sierra Environmental Resource Center. And in trying to save time and energy, because I know you guys have lots that you could be doing, I talked with Audubon and Sierra Club folks, and tried to get... be doing, I talked with Audubon and Sierra Club folks and tried to get kind of a summary of concerns from the conservation community about the general plan, and not get into details, but give you just some general areas of concern that, so you're not blindsided later when you're surprised that somebody's raised an issue. Bev and Adam are already aware of almost all of this, as I shared either some earlier, or they've seen it. But here's just a quick example, and three of you already are well up to speed on this one, but the other three may not be as much up to speed. One is, is back, back when I was dealing with the 1996 general plan process and 1995 and others, there was, earlier than that, in 1987 was the Wildlife Policy Handbook that was created, that provided, and I'm just reading from the county planning staff here, the purpose of the handbook adopted in 1987 was to establish consistent mitigation for potential impacts, to encourage to streamline development projects, to provide predictability for developers, and to institute a sound approach for conserving biological resources without the necessity for project-by-project consultations with state and federal agencies. And the key thing, and this is from, again, a planning document that Mike and Bev presented to the board, is that it was an optional program that happened to be chosen by the vast majority of applicants, because it provided an easy option without a lot of cost, if they were willing to simply set land into an open space protection, and also it provided a wide range of other options for them to choose from. As most of you are aware, there was a Biological Resources Review Guide, the Burge, that got put forward, but because of pressure, it was eliminated. And what's important for this general plan process is now the county's board has moved to what was officially described in these documents as a no-counties-program approach, which establishes no specific mitigation measures on a consistent basis, but it's leaving it up to each project-by-project to be looked at. And as Supervisor Royce at one point said, it really puts the burden on state fish and wildlife to press for more mitigation on a project-by-project basis. The perspective is, is maybe there'll be less requirements from the state Wildlife Agency. The challenge with that is, is every project comes forward on a project-by-project basis, and I believe you're going to see with comments from attorneys and from groups and others, that it's a significant diminishment of the protections that have been up to this point. So I'm just saying that's one area.
Can I interrupt your next question, because I'd like clarity on this?
Sure.
So is your point here that we should continue to have a handbook like this available and have it have the same role as it did in the past, or a modified version of it? Is that your point?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, and actually, that was the point from the Planning Community Resources Agency in 2012, was that's what they were recommending to the board to move forward to have that. So I'm just echoing that.
Okay, thank you.
And here's just a quick example of why it matters, is as part of all that, oak woodland, probably the most controversial thing that comes up in most, I mean, Dick's nodding his head because he knows out of all these years, how do you deal with when someone wants to wipe out a certain portion of oak woodland? How much needs to be protected? What are the options? And with these two tables put together over, I don't know, seven or eight years of board of supervisors' planning committee sessions, most of which were supervisors and planning commissioners, with just some other people that were appointed, over years, policies were developed, I'm just showing you some examples, oak wood, oak mitigation policies that provided a menu of options, again, a menu that could be chosen from, that included fees, or included, you know, open space, or included a variety of things. But now, under the current general plan process that's being put forward, as Adam touched on very briefly in his, is there's now an example where there's new thresholds of significance to exempt urban designated parcels. If it's two acres, you wipe out the oaks, you don't have to do anything. If you're exempting parcels on a 10-acre parcel, you could, if it's in an area that's an urban designation, have as much as five acres of oak woodland affected and not even need to mitigate, claiming it's no longer significant. I'm just letting you know, you know, no matter what your views may be on whether that's a good way to go or not, it's going to be an area of controversy that is going to be one that's raised a lot of concern. The other two areas, just to touch on, is one, the ag element, and, you know, there's some folks here who truly have been representatives of caring about ag in the county for a long time, and many people within the ag community have different points of view. But if you look on your, and I'm not asking you to do it now, but if you at some point look on the first page of the ag resources element, what was there was this key goal of limit intrusion of new development into agricultural areas by avoiding the conversion of agricultural lands, and it goes on. But that was there for all of these years, to try and protect agricultural land. Well, because there's been a lot of promotion by the development industry, provide us opportunities wherever it's feasible with the least amount of restrictions, the new policies exempt ag lands from policy 11A1, 11A3, 11B4, et cetera. So for instance, areas that are 160 acres in size, if they're surrounded by lands that are other than agriculture or public, they can now be exempted from that policy. If there are parcels 80 acres in size that are within 500 feet of a public water main, and, you know, and if they're adjacent to a wide range of certain densities, they also get exempted. It's just another example of diminishing the agricultural community, which has been historic value, and has a lot of benefits for wildlife and open space as well as. So I'm just letting you know, the issues in the ag element are not just there, but in particular, if you haven't followed, the issues related to agritourism, for those who've sat through the issues at, again, board of supervisors, planning sessions, and others, is many of the new words that are now shown in here allow what they refer to as accessory uses or compatible uses, that have nothing to do with agriculture, but are significant changes that create those noises that Jerry was talking about for people who've been living next to ag lands for years, and all of a sudden, they can have, and I was just looking at in the ordinance language, I was just looking at what was approved, the ordinance language now allows up to 40 commercial events to be held for 300 guests, two for 500 guests, and loud music inside a building until 2:00 a.m. That's not in the general plan. That's Title 17, right, ordinance language, or...
It's proposed.
But proposed, but these things all add up to make a huge difference for people living next to ag lands. And the last thing I just touch on is, it's an example of having been around probably far too long involved in these processes, and again, many times feeling kind of like trying to hold back the ocean or something. But the challenge is, just an example on scenic resources, and Bev's going to find this one interesting. I went back and was looking at the 1980 general plan and the draft 1995 general plan related to scenic protections, which are supposed to be important for tourism and the values that bring so many people here to spend their dollars. In the 1995 general plan update, 17 county roads were designated for scenic protection, four railroad grades and two recreational trails, Highway 120 from the top of Priest, from the boundary of Groveland to the boundary of Yosemite Park, and from Stanislaus County to the top of Priest Grade, those were areas that had scenic protection, and it wasn't just that it said, well, there are some guidelines that you should consider, which is now the guidelines encourage, recognize, ask you to consider and stuff, but they actually had requirements for grading standards, tree retention standards, and various other standards for 1,000 feet each side of the main highways and some of the others. But those are all gone in the current general plan, and even the language that's now in there now appears to me to be even weaker. So all I'm identifying, or all I'm trying to identify is, these are areas of concern, not trying to change anything tonight, but when you're looking at the overall information that Adam provided early on, that the original plan in 1996 was supposed to be for 97,000 people by 2020, right? Well, that was so unrealistic. It's off the scale. You just said we're at 54,000, somewhere in there, and actually, we were, I thought we were 56, but we moved back down in recent years. So the goal has been, well, we've got to create all this develop, moving outward to provide for new growth, when I'm daily up in the Twainheart area, where that Twainheart Village Shopping Center has like 26 different facilities available. If people would just come and use them, they're emptied, they're beautiful, some of them. I mean, we have such an opportunity, and there are, there are 8,000 acres, I mean, 8,000 vacant parcels in the county that already exist. All I'm trying to encourage, as you look at the overall policies, is how can we try and maximize general plan policies that encourage the many opportunities we already have, and yet hold on to those agricultural and open space areas that benefit tourism, as well as the values I'm obviously representing, which are the wildlife policies. So thanks, I think those are the key areas of concern. There's a lot of nitpicking about them, and there's also some of the land use element, community identity element, and others that have some issues, but those are the main areas, and hopefully, we can find some middle ground. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Okay, yes, sir. Your turn.
My name is Ron Pickup. I appreciate being able to address you tonight. I was born and raised in the county, and my wife Pamela and I live on a small apple ranch in Salisburyville that my family has lived on since 1946. In the 90s, during the general plan update, I was, I served on the supervisory advisory committee, and also I was on the Farm Bureau Board and served as their water committee chairman. Tonight, I'm pretty much trying to represent Old Salisburyville. We have a big difference between Old Salisburyville, Historic Salisburyville, and Willow Springs. And the residents and neighbors and adjacent property owners of Historic Salisburyville have created a letter that I'd like to read to you tonight, and I have copies for all of you. But I'd just like to read our concerns.
Can we just cut to now?
Yeah.
I think there's enough there.
Ron, is this on the general plan, or it's not on that proposed development?
No, it's speaking to generally.
Got you. Okay.
Is everybody, is there enough there?
Sure.
I think so.
Oops, here's the next one. Okay?
Perfect.
Here we go.
And everybody that, there's over 125 people signed this letter, and Adam has that, that package I gave it to, to Mike to give to you. Everybody that signed the letter has read it, has discussed it before they signed it, and clearly understand and agree with it. In general, we, the understanding, strongly wish to retain the rule and historic character of the community of Salisburyville. Specifically, we would like the following to be incorporated into the 2015 general plan update. The historical significance of our area should be protected and preserved, and not allowed to be violated by any future development. A permanent separation of Historic Salisburyville and Willow Springs should be provided via a buffer zone of large parcel zoning in those areas not yet developed between the communities. No widening or realignment of Salisburyville Road should be allowed to deface the town's historic charm or alter its historic structures. Instead, the existing speed limits on this road should be enforced for safety and to discourage increased traffic. Given the continuing California drought conditions, no new development should be served water while existing domestic and irrigation water users are asked to conserve and reduce their consumption. And no development relying on groundwater as a water supply should be allowed in our general area, as this would threaten the many existing private wells in the Salisburyville area. In general, any development beyond the present capacity of county roads, utilities, public protection, and social services should not be allowed in the Salisburyville area, and we all thank you for your serious concern, serious consideration of our concerns. Now, I'd like to, to, back in the area of the water concerns, I'd like to talk a little bit about the situation that I see the county getting into. I went to a, to a water drought crisis meeting last night, or Monday night, I guess it was, and the, I was told that the ratio between groundwater and surface water is 60, 40 percent, where usually you have 60 percent of our water supply is surface, and 40 percent is in the ground. Now, is, the situation is essentially reversed. We have more water in the ground than on the surface. So it's very tempting to want to drill into that groundwater and try to offset our problems. But in the process, the problem with that is that, yeah, we live in a fractured strata county. It's not like the valley, where it's a great big body of water, and you put many straws in, in forms of pipes and well, pumps, you draw it all out evenly. But up here, is, we have underground rivers and little pockets of water. So I felt Monday night that the idea was that we really don't have to worry that much about overdrafting our county groundwater. But indeed, we do, because if you put, there's existing wells that are pulling out of a particular strata, if a new well comes in, a big well, a commercial well, production well, sticks a pipe into that same strata, everybody suffers. Everybody that's invested tens of thousands of dollars into their private wells loses their well. And then with all the, all the failures of wells, which we're already seeing in the county, those wells have to be provided water some way. You have to truck in water, you have to pipe in water and serve them treated water, or something, they have to have water to survive. So I think we're getting in a situation where we could very well create more problems than we already have if we start going and relying on groundwater. Also, I'd like to address the, the development concerns. I don't know if some of you saw the newspaper opinion question that they put in the paper. 65 percent of the people came back and said that there's three different categories that they could choose, and the one they chose, 65 percent, is that it would be irresponsible to provide water to any new development while we're being asked to cut our consumption and conserve water. And TUD is, right now, is considering asking us for a 30 percent reduction based on our 2013 usage. And I think that makes good sense to, to conserve water that way. I don't think it, I think it's irresponsible to take on and serve new development while we're asked and trying to deal with this problem. We're in a major, major crisis here, and all indication is that it shows that it's going to continue and not get better. Hopefully, it'll get better. Just a couple more things about the groundwater. The other concern is that more development, and anytime you put development in, you're losing groundwater recharge, because the water just drains off. In agricultural lands, open space lands, the water comes down and percolates into the groundwater. As we develop and develop more and more and more, our recharge of our groundwater is going to go less and less and less. So that's another concern for development in a time of water crisis, and trying to rely on, on groundwater to make up the deficit. So I just hope that the, the water element of the general plan update will consider these problems and protect the public interest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just to underline your comments on...
Yeah.
...wells, I think I heard today, 170 wells in Tooluma County are, have gone dry or are about to go dry.
Yeah.
So to rely on wells, I don't know, but anyway, thanks.
Not going to make it. It's going to create more problems.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Yeah, Jerry?
You had a question.
Oh, it's cold.
Let's ask all where we're talking.
I was going to have a question of clarifying where Historic Salisburyville was on this, but then when we had Willow Springs, figured it out.
Yeah.
Everything but Willow Springs, I guess, huh?
Old Salisburyville is about a mile from Willow Springs, south, and this is a historic Gold Grush mining town, Cornish mining town. And the county's come a long way in preserving the town. We did a cultural resource survey and have a nice book out, and it's the first step in preserving a lot of properties that are people, that people are restoring. preserving a lot of properties that are people, that people are restoring. It's a, it's a historic place. And as regarding the wells, I had firsthand experience with the well water depleting the groundwater. When a production well was tested in my area, all of our wells were affected up to a quarter to half a mile away. I mean, if you go down so deep, you reach and get beneath the, the level where many wells are pulling from, if you go down below, you get into a bigger source of water and then everybody's affected. It not only depletes the water level, it also adversely affects the ground quality, the groundwater quality. In some places, people that had high concentrations of iron, their well cleared up and another well over here, the concentration of iron went way up. It's a very strange pattern that takes place. So, definitely, even though we have these stratas, we're still very affected.
Thank you for your comments. You want a second bite at the apple, Jack? Go ahead.
I have to agree with that man about the wells. That's where, what we're on is on wells. And I, I don't think the county or TUD should tap into it and then maybe dry somebody else's well up because it's very possible, you're not going to be able to run a water line to them like the mine did. Remember what happened with the mine? With the wells going dry around it? They had to run water too. Well, if TUD taps into the groundwater and dries somebody's well up, what are they going to do about that? I think we need to develop water, but not by taking it out of the ground. We, but we have to get more water.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else should comment?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, actually, I have two comments.
Okay.
My name's Gwen.
Hi, Gwen.
And I live in Tuolumne. My mother was on the board of park and rec board, LaRue Jones, and she and Tom Marovich and the trails, rails to trails group tried to preserve scenic corridors. And when the general plan came in 96, there was a lot of public input and that was adopted. Rails to trails, scenic corridors for people to hike, equestrian, you know, but they're not being used. They're not being used. Homes have been allowed to be built on the right of ways, Sugar Pine Railroad right of way and the Sierra Railroad right of way. Homes are being built and nobody's fighting for the open space for people to be able to use those. They're caving to the interests of the people who are paying for development rights. Okay. Apparently, the general plan is a plan that the county and the board don't really have to abide by. It's a guideline, but it's not an absolute. And I think there's things in the general plan that a lot of people put in, put into that need to be respected and addressed, things that are being eliminated, like the natural resources element that John was talking about, like the trails that I'm talking about, water. I think it's a good thing that we're having a drought because it lets us know what the bottom line is for development. We shouldn't count on, when we have lots of water for the benchmark, we should count on how much water we have at its lowest level. And so, to encourage any additional development or putting in lines to Jamestown or, look at Don Pedro's development and Groveland Community Service, they don't have enough water for their people, but somebody let that development go in. You know, Don Pedro Development, there it is. They haven't got adequate percolation for their sewers and there's not enough water for them, but they were allowed to build. You know, the people that are in charge need to pay attention to the bottom line, I think. So, and I hope in the future that, well, I guess I just hope that we can all get along.
Can't we all get along? Rodney King, 2000. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I'd also like to support the idea that, you know, we look at the amount of water we have to determine our development and not develop and then look for the water. That really the drought is sort of a wake-up call and that, I thought that was an excellent point she brought up. When we look at our low water years and what we can support, if we surpass that, then when we turn, when we fall back into a low water year cycle again, we're making problems for ourselves. So, I think that water is and has been a criteria for development and I think that looking at our, our existing amount before we do extensive development is going to create far less problems in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just, just on this water issue, I didn't live in Tuolumne County, but I did live in Fresno County in the foothills during the 75, 76, 77 drought, which was a serious drought, many of you probably remember. And at that time, I was, I had a well and my well, which was 50 foot from the surface when I drilled it in July of 75, was 50 foot from the bottom in July of 77. So, I understand, but I think what we really need to concentrate on is we need to concentrate on when we do have, because also remember the winter of 77, 78, we got 68 inches of rain in that area, which was an average of about 32. What we need to do is we need to know how to conserve our water during the good years and build it up. We need to be able in some way have greater storage of water in this county and save it for the bad years. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments for the commission? I just met, no, this gentleman's got a little priority there, I think.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and giving us this forum. My name's Richard Hartani. I, in the interest of just full disclosure, I sit on the Friends of Columbia Board and also the Columbia Area Advisory Committee, which is right now renegotiating its MOU, but that was a body that was legislated by the California Legislature to give Columbia a voice in its future and its, give it a chance to speak up about things that were in the works that would affect them. I listened with interest to the gentleman from Salisburyville and what came to mind is that we are a community made up of many small communities and we all have our, you know, wonderful and precious neighborhoods and areas that are well worth preserving. I think the drought has, in a way, I agree with the women that mentioned, it's kind of a wake-up call. It brings us together, it makes us realize there are forces much bigger than any of us that are at play. It made my heart sink a little bit to talk about how do we store water in the fat years, water for the lean years. I was here when Maloney's was built and I was on the other side trying to preserve the river, which I think was a precious resource that will never see the light of day again in our lifetimes. But aside from that, my, my main point is I would love to see more transparency in the whole process of planning our future. You gentlemen and ladies are like the people before you in the driver's seat and you, what you decide will decide what our children and our grandchildren will have down the road, long after we're gone. The reason I love this area so much is I came here as a high school senior. My parents moved here because my dad used to love to fish up here and he wanted to retire here. I moved to Columbia back then and didn't even know there was a river there. I went to Sonora High School for a year and then I went to Columbia College. It took me two years to figure out there was a river just like six miles down the road because I was caught up in just being a teenager. But once I discovered that, it was, it changed my life. And to lose a resource like that has been kind of a stake in the heart of many of us and of course, it is the other side that says, yeah, we need to, you know, make reservoirs and save water for the lean years. I have always thought there's better ways to manage our water. Groundwater, from what I read, is something that's pretty much a huge unknown. We don't know how much water is underneath our feet. There's lakes and rivers, perhaps. I also had a, we live on a well in Columbia and it went dry last June, even before it became kind of a topic of interest. Our well went dry. We went through many weeks and months of trying to reestablish water for just household use. And it makes it really clear to a person that next to air, without water, you don't get very far. So, I would urge all of you to heed the advice of a few of the speakers here and realize that building is wonderful, it boosts the economy, but when you have a bunch of beautiful new buildings and you don't have the water because you pumped it dry to try to provide for those buildings, then everyone loses. I happen to take interest in what the TUD was doing about a year and a half ago and I still remember one of the members saying, I went to the meetings and on record, this person said, well, we're trying to spur the economic development of the county by encouraging growth. And this was about the apartments over on Parrot's Ferry and 49 there, they're Stonewood Apartments. And they were actually offering sort of a deal to the developers, giving them cut-rate TUD hookups and this and that, which to me is not the purpose of the public water utility district. It's to provide water, which is, as I said, the second most important thing to life after air. So, it's not a business proposition. It's a, it's a human proposition that needs to be guarded and safeguarded very, very closely. I'm trying, I'm just thinking on my feet here, there was one other point. I guess I lost that one, but thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
And, yeah, please think of the future and building is not always the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, let's see if there's anybody else. Let's see anybody? Yes, ma'am. Take another crack at it.
Well, I apologize if I'm being kind of a pest, but I am very enthusiastic about, about water issues and Robert's concern and everyone's concern that we store water. It's true, we need to do it, but I do believe that the best way to store water is to recharge our groundwater because when we're in these murderously hot summers, when we have large open reservoirs of water, we lose a tremendous amount to evaporation. Whereas if we really understand in a, in a, in a community land use and development, how to recharge our groundwater by not developing over it and, I mean, it's a simple thing like a large parking lot that is a big piece of asphalt over the meadow, such as like the junction. If that was turned into cobble or brick and there were lines of, for water to percolate down, it's called a pervious surface. And that allows the rain to seep into that ground as opposed to run off that asphalt. So, I'm, I've been trained in a lot of this stuff and I have a lot of ideas, which I'd like to share at some time, but the idea of utilizing building and development, land use to increase our groundwater recharge is the way that we will keep that water from being evaporated during the hot years. And, and that's what I'd just like to promote.
Okay, thank you. I have a sense that the water element in this general plan, maybe a lot of debate going on. I always thought that the land use elements were always the hot issues and, and they may be at least warm, if not hot, but I think this, this whole water element is, could be more than just warm. But anyway, yeah, Jerry.
You know, there's been a request that, that there be a specific hearing tied to water use and I don't know what our means for responding to that request is, but it sounds like we should respond to it or at least promise to respond to it, that we will, we will in fact do that or if we're not going to do that, how we'll, we'll deal with that request first. And then two points and then I'm going to turn to ask the, ask Ms. Shane to respond a little bit. The second is, is that in the name of transparency here, there's a lot of things that were talked about in all of this, which I think may be outside of the scope of a general plan. And, you know, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's inside the scope of the general plan, I just don't understand it, but there's things here that we're talking about that are probably really good ideas, but it's not part of what a general plan does and it needs to be captured in another place in the, in the governmental process here. And so, I guess two questions. One is, am I right about that? Is there other things, is there another place to capture some of this water discussion? You know, maybe in some of the ideas about how we, how we develop land and that kind of thing? And are we, are we ready to respond, say, yes, we're ready to have a deeper water conversation and a deeper water conversation? Not bad, huh?
Yes. Well, what I, I want to reiterate something Adam mentioned earlier. The Board of Supervisors has directed that there be a more focused review of the water element. We will be making some changes to the draft. Now, the draft element's available, it's on the county's website, it's been there for a year now. It's been reviewed by the Board's Planning Committee and it went to the Water Committee and then to the full board for a workshop in February. But the board has decided that they would like to have, because of the exact concerns you heard tonight, they're hearing as well, to give a focused review of that. So, the Board's water, well, actually, the Tuolumne County Water Agency's Water Policy Committee is going to be looking at that in depth. We expect that to go to the committee at its meeting in May, which is usually the third Wednesday of the month, but don't quote me on that because they sometimes change their schedule. It's not as regular as your meeting schedule. That gives us an opportunity to make some changes. The board has redirected such as adding more policies about the drought and how that affects future growth. And also, the Tuolumne Utilities District is currently sponsoring a public forum that call it the Community Water Council and it has, scheduled to have three meetings. One is this Friday, we've already had one and one will be the first week in May. The idea behind that is to have various stakeholders get together to talk about the future of water in the county and to propose a direction which will then be taken by TUD out to the public. And we would then take some of the ideas that we're hearing at those meetings and at least propose them to be included in the water element. So, my recommendation is first to have the policy, Water Policy Committee, because that's their charge, is water, to go through their review, which will be again, we expect the end of May and may go into a second meeting in June. And at that point, there'd be a revised draft that would go before the full Board of Supervisors. At that point, if you're a commission, would still like to have a separate hearing on that or a discussion, you could. Otherwise, again, the board's already going through that detailed review or directed that it be done, so the public has an opportunity to go to those meetings. Those are all open to the public.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Peter?
So, if I understood what you said, currently, the plan would not be to come back in front of the commission, it would go through the water agency eventually to the board.
That's right.
It could come through or here if we requested it.
That's right. It will eventually come to you as part of the general plan package, but if you want to have a separate discussion of only the water
But if you want to have a separate discussion of only the water element, you could certainly do that.
But if the people that have the concerns and understandable concerns would best be advised to be part of that process through the Water Agency and then through the board's review.
Yes.
Maybe as an alternative to that other meeting.
Yes.
I don't think any of us cares. We'll do it. But I mean, it sounds like there's an opportunity.
And I would highly encourage those who are interested in the water issue to attend those meetings because that is where the detailed discussion is going to be. And while your body's input is very important, you are just a recommending body to the board. So this is a board-appointed committee that will be making specific recommendations both to the full board.
And that's all they're talking about on that committee is water.
That's just water.
And since I'm on a roll with puns here, you guys really need to get involved farther upstream in this process, which is one of these places we're talking about. That is farther upstream, and you don't want to get down here where we've got it all written and we're having to make yes or no decisions on it.
I think that the one thing that everyone, maybe doesn't understand, but the premise of the general plan, of course, is to provide a framework for future growth and development. And that's why it has policies about having to have public water versus private systems. The county has 130 small water systems. That was developed many years ago. We know that that was, you know, certainly we don't want to continue in the future, and that was halted back in 1996 with the current general plan, says you can't create new public water systems. That you have to, if you have to have public water, you need to tie into an existing system. And those are the types of things that, you know, new development must be consistent with those policies. So these policies are extremely important. And even though we may have land use designation that say there's a potential for more growth, if we don't have water, we're not going to be able to have that growth. And so that's really, I guess, the thing I will mention here is this water element, as the chairman said, has become the premier element right now as far as public concern.
Okay. Yes, sir, you got something more?
Well, I remembered something.
Wait a minute, just, well, come on up. You remembered your last point.
Yeah, my other point was, and thank you for mentioning, transparency was one of the things I touched on. Because I live in Columbia, I'm very aware of the fact that we used to have a Columbia Planning Commission that was dismantled by our board and apparently with a few others. And that now has become your bailiwick, so to speak. And I appreciate that you take the time and energy and interest in representing our county interests for the future general plan. The other entity I mentioned, the Columbia Area Advisory Committee, that is renewing their MOU as we speak, was given the indication by our supervisor, Carl Rodefer, that he would love to hear from us, the CAC, basically representing the community. And in our latest round of trying to pass the MOU, I just wanted to let you know, the county council apparently has decided that is in conflict with your board. They don't necessarily either want or need, or it just doesn't work out, that other community groups should officially weigh in, I guess, on issues that may actually affect us, is the take I took on how that last meeting went. So the transparency issue, I would like to see is that your representation on the planning board should be fully open to the public, like what, which it is. Well, I would be very curious to know because Columbia loves rumor, and the little rumor mill going on in Columbia is alive and well. And some of us have been told that, you know, it's the building interests, basically, that have taken over our planning commissions, and that's part of the reason why we've dismantled so many planning commissions. And in the paper I've read that it's, we're trying to streamline the process, get rid of all these little commissions out in the communities and just land it right here. And I would be willing to believe that, and I'm trying not to disparage anybody, but to me, we're losing a lot of the kind of feelers out into the community to bring in kind of the voice of the people on the street. I was very disappointed to come in and see how few people are here. I mean, you are charged with making far-ranging decisions. Maybe it's just advisory, but still, we've heard that it's very important. What you decide is going to shape our future. We won't be here for that, I don't think, but we're living what people in the past have done for us. They messed up a few things, and they've kept a lot of things right.
Okay.
So thank you. That was what I forgot.
Okay, thank you for your comments. You got something, Peter?
I think for the gentleman's benefit, when they had the same room with the Board of Supervisors review, Adam did a very similar presentation, the whole place was full, plus there were people sitting and standing. So we're the second chapter, not the first, and there were quite a few people, and I noticed people from around the county. So not to judge necessarily on just what you see tonight.
Okay, this is not a debate, so thank you for your comment.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify something that Mr. Haratani said. The issue dealing with the council opinion isn't about transparency. That's their, I can be happy to talk with him after the meeting about that situation. I'm sure him and everyone who is in the audience that all individuals or groups in the county are invited and encouraged to submit comments on any planning issue, not just the general plan, but any development project. Planning by state law and by local policy encourages public input. That's really the basis between land use planning. It's a public, very public process.
You're right. Thank you for that. Anybody else? Any other comments from, for the good of the cause, from anybody? All right, well, thank you, everybody, for attending, and I'm sure we'll see you over the coming months.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.